America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for the liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Bill Reifert.
President.
Vice Mayor Bill Earl.
President.
Councilmember Larry Hens.
Mayor.
And Councilmember, uh, Richard.
President.
Do we need a motion to his mayor?
What is?
I will make that motion. I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Thank you. Public comments, not on the agenda.
Not a long time ago.
Well, I'm gonna make this quick because I know you've got a big agenda. The new jail, everything is working really well in the new jail. We haven't had run into any issues yet. Not really, we haven't even had a lot of minor issues, so everything. When you think about all the technology that's in that thing, it's amazing that we haven't had, hadn't had any issues with it. So, everything's really going on, going good there. On the old jail, there's been several crews in, uh, on the site to inspect the facility for teardown. So, I think it's starting to move now and hopefully, uh, pretty soon we'll be tearing the old building down. On the correction side, in the fourth quarter last, um, quarter, we booked in eighty-nine, actually, that was for, that was for the month of December. But for twenty-twenty-three, we booked in twelve-hundred-and-thirty-three people, and twenty-twenty-two, eleven-twenty-five. So, those numbers remain the same as we expected they would. Uh, the patrol side, on, uh, October seventeenth, we had a gas line leak on Bell Road between Gerard and Vincent Lake Road. Uh, Branks County Emergency Management and State Police really handled that. We were only out there for a short time. But I want to tell you, there was a lot of gas shooting out that hole up there. It was going all over. Uh, twelve-five, uh, just an update for you on the night patrol. Uh, two corrections officers did qualify and are in the academy. We also hired one off the street that is also in the academy. All three of them are about halfway through now. So, we, and so far, everything's going really well. So, we have them, when they get out, they'll go into a, uh, field training officer portion, which is kind of an advanced training with, within our department, and then they'll be out on the road. And we did hire one certified officer straight off, uh, from another department, and he's, uh, within about a week of completing his FTO now. So, he'll be going out shortly. You'll probably notice that we have extended our shifts now. I'll hit it at four, so we have a set, two officers to come in at four to four, and two officers to come in six to six. So, we're extending that night patrol out. See, as these guys get back, then we'll stretch it out some more. And as it go on, eventually, we'll be in a full night shift. Uh, Victim Services Unit has been busy with death notifications and fires. I won't go through the Marine Patrol. Uh, I've got the stats here you can look at later if you want. Uh, there, let's see, new laws, only new laws, are there no hands-on for cell phones? You're probably already aware of that. Red flag laws, uh, everybody's kind of taking a, uh, wait and see on that. We're, I don't know, we're just really getting into it too much because we'll wait for the courts and everybody to figure out exactly how they're gonna handle all those things. Uh, we're not changing current protocols on the way we handle them. We're gonna handle them the way we have in the past. Sheriff's Office, uh, quarterly complaints, we had eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight, one-hundred-and-forty-three traffic stops for this to be the last quarter of last year. Fourteen PDAs, two PIs, and thirty car deer. We didn't have any BNDs on that quarter. Uh, we did have seventeen domestic abuses, uh, two assaults, six large thieves, thirty-four arrests, and two-hundred-and-seventy-five were booked in that quarter. For the Billy, or for the city of Bronson, we handled thirty-seven complaints. The most serious was a cer- uh, suspicious call. Uh, but most of ours is, uh, for you folks that are assisting your office, uh, we had seventeen of those calls, and we served a lot of warrants, and we had one property damage complaint that we apparently helped out with. Traffic, we had five citations, and we didn't have any accidents or car dealers here to get in the street. And the drug drop-off box for two thousand twenty-three took in five-hundred-and-fifty-four pounds of pills. They got a lot of pills out of medicine cabinets and out of everyone's, uh, handbag or whatever. So, that'd be my report unless anybody has any questions.
Uh, there's my quick statement. I, I appreciate your extending your hours farther.
Good, thank you.
It's a good thing.
I appreciate it. You'll notice, uh, you'll start noticing, I'll start reporting again, on door checks. Uh, we don't do it, of course, in the city. And so, you won't notice it quite as much, but we are starting to do a lot more property checks at night now, checking businesses at night. You'll notice up until, I think it was yesterday, our cavity converters have kind of slid right off the map, and we did have one the other day. Any other questions? Right, thanks so much for your time.
Thank you.
So, are we doing four consent agenda as a total? Okay. So, next on the list is the consent agenda. And anybody have any questions?
Twenty-twenty-three annual report, I'll pick it up this week.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Propose? What's the motion?
New business. Approve well number four cleaning, Paul Mulbray then.
Thank you Vice Mayor Earl. Um, January twenty-sixth, well number four was inspected by Peerless Midwest. And it's tested annually. This is the city's primary well and has not been cleaned since two thousand thirteen. The well is currently thirteen-point-six percent below the original capacity. The well was constructed in nineteen sixty and is starting to cause breaking suction where the, uh, pump is pulling in air. Peerless has provided a quote of twenty-one thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars to perform the chemical cleaning to restore the lost capacity. Questions for me or Mayor?
Questions?
How long, but, will they, or they can get to it? How long will it take to get that?
I'm not sure how long it takes to get to it, but it takes, like, five days. Worked around a well five during the five days. Which hopefully will be getting them in rotation before that ends.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve well number four cleaning?
I will make that motion to approve well number four cleaning.
House of Lords.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Approve truck pull location, Brandon.
Thank you Vice Mayor Earl. Now that one-fifty Wayne Street is gearing up for construction of their storage unit facility. The Bronson Viking Alliance is looking for a new location for the truck pulling track. They would like to move the track over to the east, which is land owned by the city for future residential growth. The track would be placed on lots that are plotted and may encompass part of the future road that would serve those lots. The city also owns the railway for a future road between Dollar General and Karim Health. It's about fifty feet wide, and I believe that would also be utilized. Our insurance company require that the city bank is additionally insured. The solution would likely need to be temporary as this is our only available plotted land for future housing development. It's serviced by water and sewer was construction, constructed for additional growth there. The, uh, the alliance would like to sign a five-year lease for the land, with the city having the ability to opt out of the lease with thirty days' notice. In your packet is a narrative about the truck pulls and the need to move the track along with the map.
I've got some maps here, too. Um, essentially, you know, we've, this has been a part of our community for all the thirty years. It does support athletics quite a bit. Uh, during that three years, they've been able to provide over or under fifty thousand dollars extra to the, to the schools, um, for their needs, and I think that would be hard to replace. It's also a very unique event to our community and to help support the Polish Festival as well.
I think, I think it's, uh, if we lose truck pulls, it's everything, you know? I think we need to really, do Earth and McKinnon hold on to it.
Any other questions, comments?
I'm president of the Bronson Polish Festival, KNECAX, and it's a great, um, calling for the Polish Festival. Every year, we get people calling. Are you gonna have the truck pulls? Uh, they may not come to other events, but, um, they do come to the truck pulls, and the people, other people come, and they hear about the truck pulls, and they've visited other events, and they continue to comment how well-run it is. So, I would be in great support. I mean, it would be a loss if we didn't have it.
I agree with that, but where's, where's parking gonna end up being?
Um, so we have talked with the masons, um, uh, so obviously, we're, we're losing a good chunk of that field, which we've used for parking for years. However, the entire field is not going to be developed. I have talked with the, um, the gentleman that purchased the land, said we're tight on parking, park there. Um, we've talked to the masons. They're not doing anything event-wise to use their parking lot, so that's available. Um, by putting it next to the old track, we're not gonna lose any of our pit space parking. Um, so it'd just be a little bit of spectator parking, and I think they can, you know, there's, there's enough little spots here and there, um, to fit those in, and I don't think.
Well, I just was curious if you've gotten permission to, from, uh, the landlords around that?
Yes, yep, and that's what we're working with, is to make sure that we have clearance from the, the landowners and businesses surrounding still this, this area. Um, we have to make sure that that's not gonna interfere with anything that they've got going on, and to make sure that, you know, if the weather's bad, they have to correct.
Well, I grabbed Brandon the day we went down and looked at it, and, um, my only real concern was whether you were gonna be able to have parking in the area where the gentleman bought or putting up the storage units, because that would be huge for you.
It would be huge. So, we can do a little bit of that depending on, you know, what their footprint ends up like. Um, so I had talked to him about that as well, so, I mean, we're gonna get some relief back in that area. But not as much as before, but.
Along with maybe moving some of the trucks over behind those other buildings as far as truck and trailers go, to kind of move that back to open up more in front of Dollar General. You just add to it, you know, it's not just people in the community, the fans or anything like that. I've been to poles. I was roaming Indiana in September last year. One of the porters was there, and he asked where I was from, and I told him, he said, "Oh, yeah, that pole behind, you know, it's Dollar General Motorsports Park," or something like that. But, you know, and he'd been there, he'd pulled, you know, and so it's a known pole. Try to take it further.
Well, there's, there's a lot of money into the community for.
Right.
It has. They come in early, they watch the parade, they, they go uptown, they get Polish food, and it's, I mean, they're, they haul in for the day.
And, you know, oh, you had to put volunteers so many hours of time in that, so it's just, can, there's not enough thank you for what you guys do. I know Pat's there all the time, and we, you know.
I'm not there all the time. I was there prior, but, you know, I, I enjoy seeing where it is today. And when I quit volunteering, you know, I think it's in the right hands. It's went, it's grown.
It's just so appreciative of what you guys, all of you, all of you put in, trying to make that such a big event, and we just don't see that happen, losing that spot. I only have two other concerns, and one is the insurance, because now we're the additional insured.
Yeah, so, um, each year, you do obtain a liability policy, um, naming a property owner, and so we can definitely, once we get to that point, um, we can be sure to have you review the, the policy if you wish before it's finalized for that event.
I'm sure that Brandon's gonna have some limits that you're gonna have to meet to protect the city. But that, and knowing full well that if we have a chance to sell property to build houses on, I, I know the clauses there. I just don't want anybody upset that, oh, now we gotta live again.
No, and we understand that this is, this is a win-win, and we're not, this is, I think, to help us bridge so we can find another chunk of property. I mean, there is development happening right there, so over time, that, it's just not gonna be an ideal space. So, we are continuing to scout other, other property that would be suited for us, that's a little more off to the side, not, not nestled in the middle of something.
Right. You're gonna have to cut a lot of trees down. Now, are you planning on utilizing city staff as far as the tree cut down?
No, um, so my brother has a tree business. He's got a grinder, a payloader, and stuff like that, so that's where we're at, so we've got to work for free.
I don't think Joe has anticipations on digging all those stumps out.
No, no, so, yeah, we've got that covered. Um, that would be something that.
It's a lot of work.
Yes, it's a lot of work, but, um, like I said, it does so much for the community. Um, it's, it's something that we're willing to put the time and the effort into to make sure that it keeps going. You know, we got really lucky to come back after COVID, after skipping a year. A lot of things didn't come back, and I think that was, you know, very fortunate. We're not giving up.
It's sad that we've lost as much as we did during COVID.
Yes, yep.
Everywhere.
And that's to say something though for the poll, is even when I started back in ninety-two, somebody said, "Well, how do you know people come?" Bronson's a polling town. You know, back in the concrete days down there at Greenwall, when we started to poll, it was easy. You know, the fans were there, so. I, the only thing that I'll uphold with this, I don't know what else I can say in here, thirty days, please don't come June twenty-fifth and say, "Yeah, thirty days, yeah." So. But no, we understand, you know, this is a fluid thing, progression in your ways as far, as far as housing, whatever. Everybody's in understanding of that. This is lets us all move forward if we can do that in an economical way.
We can, unfortunately, have some growth in telling the house that was stagnant for years, so, uh, we just can't be locked down.
Right.
And I understand that we don't want to come at the last minute and say, "Hey, move."
Yeah, because you're gonna be more worried than thirty. Yeah.
I guess it's loans and insurance coverage is okay, and everybody's on board with the thirty days. I'll make a motion that we approve the truck pull location.
House seconding.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Now, there's gonna be a grand accident.
No, I'm, I'm finding this interesting.
Okay. Next on the agenda, trail project discussion. Brandon.
Thank you Vice Mayor Earl. Uh, city's been working. Have in March, and they have produced some estimates for the proposed trail project. To do a paved trail, the cost would be seven-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars. An unpaid trail would be five-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars and fifty cents. While unpaid trail is eligible, a paved trail will score higher for funding. They are recommending to do this project in two phases for the paved trail. The first phase, the city would apply for two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety dollars from the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund, which would require a eighty-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-three-dollar-and-fifty-cent match. The program is offered through the Michigan Department of Natural Resources. The same would be done for the second, second plan, the phase, the city would apply for two-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty dollars. And DNR funds require a ninety-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eleven-dollar match. The city would also apply for MDOT Transportation Alternative Program grant. The TAP grant focuses on enhancing intermodal transportation systems and providing safe, alternative transportation options. The city would need to show some sidewalk connection. The site plan that's in your packet does show a little bit of sidewalk being added in Colonnus Park, and some sidewalk being added on Elbers Road to get to the Little League Park. If the sidewalk ends at Parks, that's, sounds as though it'd be sufficient for the MDOT requirements there. Using TAP funds to cover the DNR matching funds would help reduce the city's out-of-pocket costs from approximately one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars to sixty-thousand dollars. Again, the total project is seven-hundred-and-twenty dollars, seven, seven-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-one-fifty-four. The estimate does not include that sidewalk that I mentioned. We also do not have sidewalks in the neighborhood of, neighborhood of Colonnus Park. Uh, there's none on Raymond or Sherman, and we do have some on North Lincoln Street, but it ends a couple of blocks before Colonnus Park. So, the city should begin to think about adding some sidewalk in these areas that can be used with non-motorized funds from the major and local street fund. The city would like to move forward with this project plan. Adam Marsh will assist the city in preparing the grant application at no cost to the city, along with some city, city staff out putting it together. Any questions? So, is seventy-one doesn't include any? There's no design fees from Evermarsh, or they're just doing grant applications? The grant application. So, is there to be included in this? Yeah, that would be your total project cost, minus the sidewalk at least we had. If we're okay with that site plan, then they'll put an estimate together on the sidewalk. Any questions, any concerns? Do we have a motion to, oh, nope, that comes later. This is just discussion. This discussion, uh, we will have to have a special meeting to approve, uh, resolution of support and commitment to that grant. We need a little more information before we can bring that to council, so. We will have to try to do that before the end of the month.
So, is everybody okay with Brandon moving ahead with, uh, Evermarsh on the trail prep? Getting set?
Yep.
Okay, you guys go ahead.
Okay.
Next up, approve Evermarsh proposal for engineering and project scope.
Thank you Vice Mayor Earl. Um, this topic got a little more interesting this afternoon. We got a letter from Eagle stating we were looking for an additional two or four weeks from the project timeline for the state revolving loan fund program. They have denied that request. Adam Marsh would not be able to, very likely not be able to meet the deadline as it is, just because we have such a short window. But they have a prepared proposal for us to assist with the revolving loan fund and doing the design work, bidding, and construction oversight and inspections. The city is able to borrow up to ten million dollars total. If the city does collection system repairs only, the total project cost would be five-point-five million. If council wanted to also do the new lift stations as part of the project, the total project cost would be eight million. I'm going to assume that that would probably no longer be an option, given the tight window. We'd probably be lucky to be able to do the five-and-a-half million collection system repairs. So, again, this is all sort of contingent upon us being able to meet those deadlines or maybe not be able to accept the funds for this project round. Uh, we are still working on some other avenues to try to push for a little extra time. So, if the city does collection system repairs only, the total engineering cost would be nine-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Again, with a total project cost of five-point-five million. And I, unlike the scenario, if we still wanted to do the lift stations, engineering would be a little over one-point-four million, with a total project cost of eight million. And your packet is a professional services agreement for doing a collection system only, and a separate one for the collection system and lift stations. Since the design costs would need to be paid by the city and then later reimbursed through the loan, the city would need to use that bond anticipation note. So, if the project does get to go forward, then we wouldn't use those funds. The city's currently getting about four-point-three-five percent interest on that money, so we're, our interest rate on that loan is four-and-a-half percent, so it's not a huge cost to, to have that still. But, uh, are there thoughts on, if council wants to do the lift stations, or just try to focus on the collection system? The next, or two items down from this is a resolution of support for applying for congressional-directed spending funds. This is, these are sort of like the old earmark programs that used to be out there, the legislators. So, we will be pursuing that, working through Senator Peter's office and Tim Walberg's office. But that may be our only avenue at this point, other than going back to USDA. But I would like to get approval for the professional services agreement. Either with the lift stations or without, and then it'll be contingent on whether, if Adam, or, if Adam Marsh has the amount of time to be able to get Eagle out there looking for it.
As I remember, the lift stations weren't in good shape, were they? Because, I mean, it, to me, I think we got through the lift stations, too. Um, yeah, it's.
Still have to be in the future.
It's gonna cost more in the future. I mean, if, and all they put will be here to do that sort of thing, most likely will it not?
Lighting would probably be not a lot of good news, I guess, but.
No, we have.
The lift station would be, uh, the whole approval.
Lighting would get Eagle out of here, too, then, or should? Hopefully. We need to get below our typically maximum, maximum flows before the whole. Get away back off.
What do you think, Jared? I mean, you're up there, you know, it's pretty bad, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, the lift stations are old, but I understand, too, that it cannot be done at once.
It's not really an eye, eye issue, no.
Now, this other thing you were talking about, is that something where we might be able to get funding through them? Through their help, is what you're saying? Maybe you would live states and stations in the future.
Yeah. I would want to talk with their offices, but you could pursue both if you're looking at federal dollars without much of a, I don't know if there's a match for that program at all. Doesn't sound like it. Depending on, you know, if you ask for eight million, you're less likely to get funded versus a point for five million. I would want to ask about that, but I mean, you could do a contingent upon, uh, Evan Marsh, contingent upon. We can also pursue at the same time, you have to do with congressional offices with the lift stations or. So, what's the chances if we try and go for the whole ball of wax, that we can continue to push Eagle and maybe i- if council approves and we're, we're looking at the funds, get them to back off a little bit on their timelines? Or you think they're set in stone on their timelines? Well, they've been very inflexible at this point, so they did give us four additional months on completing phase one construction. I believe that date was the end of December, and I think they've given us till April. I would have to find out. I'm not even sure at what point the funds would become available. It'd be a twenty, it's a twenty-twenty-five ask.
So, it looks like the end of the year, so we kind of, yeah.
End of twenty.
That's really yours, October versus September thirtieth, so.
That's what they're looking at.
Some construction will need to be completed before.
April, uh, of twenty-six, nine-nine-four-five.
And I think I'm wrong when I say that the age of lift stations, at least this one on Largo Street, it wouldn't be in our best interest to do.
Yeah, if we can get the money to do it, absolutely. Like you said, it's gonna be more expensive down the road. It's not gonna get cheaper.
Stuff can get even cheaper. I'd sure like to see it done at one time, man.
We need to have design in by end of April this year. April fifteenth. April fifteenth, we have to have the designing in. And I believe it's a ninety percent design completion.
How far is Ever March, then, they can get?
Well, they have told me that they can't meet that date, so project would be contingent upon them being able to get the additional time. But they are looking at some different avenues, some strings to, the butts to push, the mindset. I think it's also probably time to reach out to our state legislators.
That's what I'm thinking, I think we need some help from the state to help push this. I mean, we're trying to meet their guidelines, you know, trying to meet, but, you know, we don't have unlimited funds here to, to throw at this, you know.
We've done nothing but tried to work with them, and they're not being helpful at all, and. You know, I requested, once we found out we weren't getting any principal forgiveness. Uh, I reached out and sent a letter November eleventh requesting an extension, or maybe it was eleven, uh, November tenth. And did not get a response from Eagle until January twenty-third. So that was two and a half months that we could have been working on design. If they had come to us and said, no, you're not getting an extension, take this money. We wouldn't have that additional time.
So our timelines.
Well, we, we've gotta push the timeline, but we gotta ask the, the bigger people up there for help. But what is council's thought process? Do we wanna do collection system repairs only? Or collection systems and new lift stations? Larry's already said he wants to do both.
If we try to do both with the Eagle funding, it's gonna be extremely difficult if they're, it's pretty much impossible, but. If they can't work with us, or someone either of them could work with us, then we may have.
So we have, really, they got us between rock and hard to it. If we do what's right, they're gonna work with us. But if we do what's partial, they'll work with us. So we went with the collection system repair only, we got, we're gonna open their eyes wider, try to go over the whole.
Well, it would take more time for the engineers to get everything done. I mean, some of those design plans are a good percent completed, but it's still gonna be difficult, completed by Friday.
As much as I'd like to see all of them, I think to meet the deadlines and trying to Eagle push back, I think we look at the collection system repairs only.
Hey, agree with that in respect to the timeframe that we got, but we definitely should keep those lift stations on our mind because they need it too.
And so, and we're thinking maybe this congressional directed spending could help on that.
Depending on the feedback I get as far as likeness of being funded at five and a half versus eight million.
I guess we have no choice but to go for just the collection and, and then deal with our politicians on saying, we wanna do the right thing, but we're being forced to this. See if they can help us accomplish both.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the Ever March proposal for the collection system repairs?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the Ever March collection system repairs, I'll say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Um, we're upward. Um, approve new property boundaries for Cronkite Vault.
Thank you Mike, Vice Mayor Earl. In your packet is a new survey, which provides an additional forty feet of width. And a hundred and fifty feet of depth to the east of the property previously sold by the city to Lucas Concreit, Concreit of Cronkite Vault. Uh, this will provide enough space for his building out of the consumer's energy easement. So looking for approval for this change, so we, Chuck and I can amend the development agreement for the property.
Any questions? Any comments? Do you have a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve.
New property? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed? Resolution of support for congressional direct spending, resolution number twenty-four dash three dash three. Brandon?
Thank you Vice Mayor Earl. Annual letting members of Congress, Congress seek projects for congressional direct spending projects. We've reached out to Representative Tim Walberg's office, we'll be meeting with him on Friday. About inflow and infiltration and potentially lift station project. As I mentioned before, we've also been working with Senator Peter, Peter's office. We may wanna submit the application to them as he's. On the Senate Appropriations Committee. Um, hopefully we can work with both offices and potentially get some bipartisan support for that.
This is election, you can't run that out.
Any questions, any comments? Should we have a motion to approve resolution twenty-four dash three dash three?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-four dash three dash three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So. Okay, so do you wanna read the rest of yours now, or you wanna read it in city manager comments?
I can go now. Uh, since the police department building has been completed. We have additional office space, an additional office for Deputy Chief Parker. And a workspace for a potential fifth officer. Just wanted to give a big, huge thank you to Chief Johnson, who dedicated a lot of his own time in making this a reality with. The painting work, cleaning, running wires between the ceiling, organizing and moving. So thank you, and thank you to everyone from the police department that helped, even Patrick helped with some painting there as well. Yeah, DPW, thank you for assistance with that move. Jerry for his work in creating the lobby window that looks really great. And just wanna remind council of the annual fire banquet, which will be this Saturday at six thirty, with dinner starting at seven. That's all I have.
The fire department banquet is at the fire station?
Yes, right.
Okay, city staff comments?
Do you want to go first? Yeah, that's fine. Our new tanker is in service, uh, which allowed us to take the old tanker out to the satellite station. We also took our mini pumper that we received free from the Department of Natural Resources to the satellite station, so those two fire trucks are out there now. Uh, all we have, the shower's been put in. The only thing we have left to do is the concrete approaches once, once the weather breaks, and then that project is complete. Uh, in order for people to get, um, reclassified as their ISO, basically for those in the room that are kinda new to the process. Your, your insurance on your home and on your business is roughly, uh, determined by how far you are from a fire station. Once you go beyond five road miles from a fire station, you have, uh, what is an ISO ten, which means no insurance. You have no fire department as far as your insurance is concerned. So all the folks out in Noble and Gilead that are beyond five road miles from here, they were a ten. And they paid their rates accordingly. Now with that satellite station there with two fire trucks, if they are within five road miles of that, that resets them. So, uh, as long as they don't use State Farm, I think that's the only company that doesn't, uh, look at ISO, um, they will see insurance savings. So in order to do that, we're gonna just go through a whole, whole blown ISO audit, uh, which will include the city on the water supply. Your ISO score is based twenty-five percent on your water supply, twenty-five percent on nine-one-one, how they handle emergency calls, and then twenty-five percent on the capabilities of the fire department. So that will be mid-April, uh, we will go through that. I suspect we will stay in the ISO four, which is what we are now in the city of Bronson. And, uh, so this, this, Brandon and probably Jerry and maybe even Joe have a little involvement with that. I'd like to thank DPW for storing the new tanker until we were able to put the old one out to the satellite station, um, appreciate that, being able to store it inside. And, uh, we just submitted a assistance to firefighter grant through FEMA for, it was roughly fifty thousand dollars to put an exhaust removal system in the new station. So if, uh, if we're able to do that, uh, that's only a five percent match, so it'll only cost the fire department twenty-five hundred dollars.
Sure.
We'll keep our fingers crossed on that, and, uh, once, uh, the concrete's done and the weather's nice, we will have an open house out at the satellite station. Uh, in conjunction with Gilead Township. The additional building on the side of it is their new township hall. Absolutely amazing the way the community came together and supported this project. The majority of the people that did the work on it, including contractors, donated all of their labor. For, just to put it in perspective, Gilead's ten, brand new township hall that has two handicap accessible bathrooms. Uh, heating and air conditioning, they have about seventy thousand dollars in it, that's it. So it's an amazing, amazing, uh, project, amazing community support to be able to pull this off. Without that. Community support and involvement, we would have never been able to do this, so. Um, part of the banquet Saturday, we'll be, uh, thanking those folks. We've invited everybody that donated time and labor and energy to come out, and so. We'll have a meal and, and thank them for their services. So, uh, barring any questions, that's my report. It's a, oh, sure, diesel exhaust renewal system, so it's, uh, like what we have here at the station, it hooks right to the trucks. And when the trucks fire up, all the diesel exhaust is pulled in through a fan and it puts it on the outside of the building, because diesel exhaust is a known carcinogen. We've got all our turn-up gear hanging on the walls, our coats and our pants that we wear when we respond to emergencies, we don't wanna cover those with diesel exhaust, so that's the idea behind that. I just wanted to say that we are, as it's been mentioned, we are in the building. It's been a long road, it's about end of November. But, uh, we are functioning, uh, we're probably about ninety percent complete from where we need to be. Um, wanted to thank DPW, Jerry from Wastewater, and even Adam, everybody that's taken part in, in helping move, paint. Tear things apart to get stuff out of the building. Um, a few things we had to rip through a hole to get it out just because of the weight and heaviness of. Some of the old safes that we had to move, but, um, we're functioning and it's gonna be a much better space for us. And I'm excited to see what else we can do with the building, especially with the upstairs and what more we can do, but, uh, I think it's like, it's a great move. Uh, I think the community will support it when they see, you know, what we've done, how we're using it. But I wanted to thank the council on that for going through with the project. It's, it's been a long road for all of us to get to where we are, but, uh. I think it was a definite beneficial to the city, uh, putting this up back up on US twelve, where I think we're a little bit more visible. And I think the building's gonna work out great, so, um, barring any questions, um, if anybody wants to come take a quick peek at the building after the meeting. While the building open, go and take a walk through, just kinda see where we're at and what we're still working on, uh, you're more than welcome to, so. And I just wanted to say thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's an investment for everybody. Well, we're on our last run of meters, thank the Lord. This week's installs, whoever doesn't get with city office, they will be shut off, and we will get them at a later date. Um, I've had Larry go with me, uh, we've looked at a truck, a boom truck, we've gone for hesitant, so it's more looking. These things are slim pickings, very hard to find. Um, there's some out there, uh, they just don't meet standards of what I'm looking for to help the city. Um, I do have a couple pages here if you guys wanna see what I'm looking at.